Wow, that's new. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman for December 11th, 2018. This is our last work session of 2018. And tonight will be our last board meeting for 2018. So as usual, the first item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on the agenda. I see that people have learned to fill out speakers cards. And I don't have any for people that are not on the agenda. So we'll move right on to item one, a tree commission report. We're going to defer that to another date, as well as item two, which is the Public Art Commission update. We're going to defer that to a later date to be determined. And we'll move on to item three, which is a special event permit for the Pilgrimage Music and Cultural Festival of the Park of Harlinsdale Farm, being held September 20th through 22nd, 2019. And the 2018 pilgrimage after-action report. What we'll plan on doing is hearing the after-action report, because I think that's what the board wanted to hear last time. And then if there are specific questions for them, you can address them to Lisa and Todd. And then if there's specific questions for the pilgrimage folks, they're here too, to be available. So...
So, yeah, as the mayor said, we're following up from last meeting, which provided you with the updated 2019 event application. And we have since then been able to complete the after-action report, provided you with that. And Todd Horton, who serves both as deputy fire chief, but also as our emergency management lead person on staff, will cover that and served as really our incident commander during the pilgrimage festival from a city perspective. So Todd has worked hard, along with Lisa and the rest of our special events team, also working with pilgrimage staff and their team to examine the event, think through the event, look at what went well, what areas that we can improve on, especially as it relates to the evacuation that was needed to be implemented. And Todd will walk through that with you tonight, and then we're glad to take any questions from there. And as the mayor indicated, we've got the lead folks from pilgrimage here as well to help address any concerns you might have from their end, or questions you might have from their end. So Todd, take your work.
Hopefully you all had a chance to read the report. This is a high-level overview, so it will not cover everything in the report, but I'm certainly happy to answer anything that was covered in the report. So the tenants' cap was set at 27,500 each day, not counting children under 10. Another estimated 1,500 personnel would manage the event and ensure that it ran smoothly, with very few exceptions. Everything was going really well up until the evacuation time. Everything was being managed, and we were experiencing no problems. Weather event that happened around 4:24 resulted in a cancellation of the event and a subsequent, I mean, a suspension, excuse me, and a subsequent cancellation at 6:51 PM. As you read through the report, it should be apparent that in areas where we planned, and where everybody knew the plan, and where the plan was executed, things went really well. And in cases where there wasn't good planning, or the plan wasn't well-known, or wasn't well-executed, that's where problems were experienced on this particular incident. It is also important to note that while this is a pilgrimage after-action report, it's certainly beneficial for the city as we look at all other special events and how we work to manage those events. Little methodology about the report. We requested feedback from everyone that had any part in pilgrimage. Some people responded, others did not. We requested general observations from people about not only what they experienced, but even what they perceived to happen, because perception is reality for everyone involved. All of these responses were formed into an agenda, which brought together all the players that were involved for a debriefing session. And we worked through every one of those agenda items and come to some understanding, clearing up some discrepancies that maybe one reported where another one didn't see the same thing. And then, of course, we used those, that information, along with video footage from over 18 cameras that were working at the site, from an incident management software, for public safety, audio recordings, and other methods to be able to verify the information that's contained within this report for your review. Planning for pilgrimage is not just a couple-of-month process, it's a year-round event for us. It's something that begins, obviously, with the permitting process, and I won't read every one of those details. You understand how the permitting process works. But once BOMA approves the permit, really the hard task of planning for the event goes into play. There's multiple site visits that happen at the site during construction. There's multiple conversations, multiple emails, multiple exchanges of information between not only staff and our response partners, but also pilgrimage, to ensure that every area of the festival is fully vetted. The police department creates an operations report. The city creates an emergency management report. And pilgrimage also creates an emergency operations plan for this event. And new this year that we haven't done in the past was we did a tabletop exercise on May the 2nd, in which there were Franklin, represented 27 people from the city of Franklin and/or our partners, and 14 representatives from pilgrimage came together, and we did a half-a-day training exercise to simulate certain things that might go on in this event to ensure that we knew how we were going to handle those. New this year also was for the event was the establishment of a formal command post. And this is a location where the incident commanders and the management team can come together to manage all aspects of the event. That was provided in a trailer that was more than sufficient to meet our needs. In addition, there was a company this year hired by pilgrimage called Unified Command, who brought in not only an incident management software, but they also deployed 18 full-motion video cameras throughout the venue, which provided us almost real-time situational awareness from almost every aspect of the venue. Provided, the lack of Wi-Fi coverage, however, did pose some problems with the footage not being full motion the entire time. We also experienced a lack of video coverage along Franklin Road and Liberty Pike. Had we have had those cameras in those locations, it would have helped us make better decisions during the evacuation, because we could have seen the pedestrians moving through the traffic and the traffic control measures that were being put in place. So next year, pilgrimage is going to increase the number of cameras to ensure that we do have adequate coverage for both Franklin Road and Liberty Pike. As I mentioned, the lack of Wi-Fi support affected the command operations only slightly. More importantly, it affected overall reception of information from the attendees. When you have 25,000 people attending an event, a lot of people are on, attempting to use Wi-Fi for various means, and it is also one of the primary means we use to get public safety messaging and important messages to them. So Wi-Fi was very poor on this particular event, and it's something that pilgrimage fully expected to be accomplished by their provider, but something happened, and the provider failed to deliver the end results. So it is necessary that this be corrected for future events. There's also, some of you may be aware of the FirstNet, which is a public safety network dedicated to public safety. And it's important that the city continue to look at the benefits that FirstNet offers for its public safety officials to be able to, still be able to get good Wi-Fi coverage in all situations, regardless of what the general public is doing. We look at impacts to future park events. Obviously, Harlinsdale hosts a variety of events throughout the year. And the weather event this year created an extended load-out time for pilgrimage, but also a significant time for repair for future use of the site. This resulted in some cancellations of planned events that were already scheduled. And so one of the, a couple of the recommendations that we have for that is to, the city to work diligently to address how to handle these impacts for all future events. And some examples of that is, we may include an insertion of a buyout clause in the existing contract, or we may encourage people to buy special event holders, we may require special event holders who immediately follow pilgrimage to purchase event cancellation insurance. There may be another, a number of other things that we can do, but we certainly will continue to look at that very closely, so that we can hopefully prevent that from happening in the future. When we look at traffic, there was a new traffic plan that was implemented for 2018. And if you were in the area at all, you would notice that there was virtually no backup this year on Franklin Road, Mack Hatcher, or Cool Springs, which was a significant problem last year. Until the law, until evacuation was ordered, law enforcement traffic personnel maintained their assignments. But when the evacuation happened, because they only have enough people to work traffic, they had to relocate some of their posts into new positions to affect some new traffic measures that we put in place. So, for instance, we don't have people downtown Franklin managing Second Avenue and First Avenue and those, Bridge Street and those areas during normal operations, because it's not necessary. But when evacuation is occurring, it's necessary for us to move officers into that location. So we're asking the law enforcement this year to, and pilgrimage, to increase the number of law enforcement officers, just to be sure that those posts can be covered without having to relocate officers once an evacuation does ensue. Multiple meetings occur to create the traffic plan. It's one of our hardest tasks that we have to overcome. It is essential that this traffic plan be well-designed and be completed at least two weeks prior to the event, so that all the notifications can be made, so that the Good Neighbor letters can go out, so that the media can get a hold of it, and so everybody can be planning on how the traffic plan is going to work. Unfortunately, there's always situations that come up within the last few days of the event that we must address. And one such example here is Franklin First United Methodist Church notified us just five days before the event that they were going to open up their parking lot for parking. Well, this puts the potential for a couple of thousand people or more to walk that section of road, which we had not planned for, for this particular event. So it was necessary for us to do that and to adjust some of our traffic plan accordingly. The plan was to put some barricades along the white line of Franklin Road. However, it's a narrow shoulder there, only three foot wide, and it, we felt like that it further complicated our ability to manage that. Another thing that happened was we, we had plans with the church to close Daniel McMahon Lane, and the day before the event, the church called and asked, could we reopen that instead? So we agreed to that, because we hadn't provided them notice upfront that that was going to be closed. Unfortunately, the event didn't happen Sunday, so it didn't, it didn't affect us anyway. But for all future events, the closing of Daniel McMahon is necessary for the safety of the people who are traversing that area, and we will work with the church well in advance so that they can message that appropriately. We also positioned additional light towers in those areas for that purpose. We also need to ensure as a city that these last-minute traffic plans, there's a lot of people involved in setting up the traffic plan, and a lot of people involved in managing the traffic plan. So it's important for us as a city just to be sure that we have a communications mechanism in place, so that when those last-minute changes happen, everybody that needs to know can find out, and there's no question when it comes time to erect the things that must be put up. Pedicabs, as you may know, pedicabs run from downtown Franklin to Harlinsdale, and each year they prove to be a challenge for us. It is purposely designed that pedicabs will use the pedestrian lane coming toward the event, and they will use the traffic lane going away from the event. But unfortunately, the pedicab drivers tend to give no regard for the traffic, and they simply weave in and out of cars from side to side as they're maneuvering down, back into downtown. And typically, they're more courteous of pedestrians walking, but still, if a pedestrian is not aware that a pedicab is coming up behind them, and they accidentally shift their pattern, then they may cause an accident. So we're recommending that until a safer solution can be achieved, no more pedicabs to be operating during this event. Talk a little bit about on-site parking. Each year, the city has considerable discussion about on-site parking, and whether we should have on-site parking, whether we should limit on-site parking, and to what degree that is. So I've just listed some of the advantages and disadvantages here of doing that. Some advantages of having on-site parking are, obviously, when cars park on-site, attendees are in close proximity to shelter in their vehicles during times of storm like we had this year. When weather does not occur, severe weather does not occur, obviously, it provides convenience for attendees, especially those who are physically impaired to be able to access the site. The safety benefits of reducing traffic and pedestrians using the same road network will certainly be recognized if we didn't intermix the two. Some disadvantage, however, pilgrimage must have access to the site. Obviously, if they can't get resources into the site, they can't run an event. The only aspect that can be eliminated is the 10D parking. The north lot presently is allotted for 1,500 vehicles, but could hold a little bit more. And the south lot is allocated 2,000-vehicle parking spaces. If we took those vehicles and moved all of them off-site, there's presently not enough parking in the designated off-site lots. And so that would simply mean procuring more off-site parking lots that are farther distance away from the event, which requires people to walk farther, which, under normal circumstances, is not an issue, but certainly during an evacuation, it can require us to have to evacuate sooner and allow more time for people to be able to reach those areas. Every time we use an estimate of number of riders per vehicle, we use a factor of 2.3, assuming 2.3 people per vehicle. So this means that for every vehicle that is eliminated, that's 2.3 more people that have to walk a greater distance for shelter. A significant increase will be required, obviously, for them to do that, and a likely increase to surrounding traffic in areas that are not immediately impacted would certainly happen as we extend out the evacuation to a farther distance. It also may prove difficult to access the site by outside emergency vehicles when a clearly-defined traffic pattern is not already established, meaning if we eliminate, for instance, all traffic southbound from the park to downtown Franklin, and there's not an established lane of traffic, period, it's harder to clear the streets to allow emergency vehicles to come in, because pedestrians assume they have the entire right of way. When we look at affected address points, there's 183, or 138, I'm sorry, address points that access Franklin Road between the park's south entrance and First Avenue. There's 53 address points that access Franklin Road between Mack Hatcher and the park's south entrance. And there's 425 address points that utilize Liberty Pike between Franklin Road and Eddie Lane. So as a city, we must be cognizant that these people must be able to access their home at any time of the day, as well as they may have services that come, like lawn care services, they may have people coming to visit them, certainly mail delivery and other things. And so to eliminate traffic altogether is not an option, but it certainly can be managed and limited to just these homeowners, but we have to put some real creative thought in how we do that. It's worth noting that while eliminating parking in these north and south lots would prevent the ground damage that occurred, it certainly wouldn't have prevented all of the other damage that was occurred on-site due to the weather event, and we could still experience the same thing in the future. It is also important to note, like I did last month, that we don't yet know what the widening of Franklin Road construction project will be like during this time, and that will certainly have some impacts on how we plan for this event. So we should continue to work with pilgrimage as an after-action review to fully evaluate the on-site parking, and whether it should be limited or not, and to what degree that should occur. Sorry, got behind on the slides. So looking at the evacuation and cancellation itself, at 15:39 hours, radar indicated that lightning was in 20 miles of the site. Pilgrimage, according to their emergency operations plan, immediately enacts a code yellow, which is simply an alert to their people that severe weather is potentially moving in the direction of the festival, and they start taking certain precautions and putting certain measures in place. City staff reported at their designated post for possible evacuation, which included factory, Liberty Elementary, City Hall, and the basement of the historic courthouse. And a fire resource dispatcher was Liberty, was sent to Liberty Pike to open Liberty Elementary School, and law enforcement was told to begin to prepare for a site evacuation. As well as EMS moved two additional EMS units into the pedestrian walkways, and that was a good call, because we ended up having three medical calls during that pedestrian evacuation, with two of those being transported to the hospital, and one being an officer who was struck by a vehicle. Weather information was provided by two separate meteorologists. Pilgrimage has their weather ops, and we use our weather meteorologist as well. The approaching event contained torrential rains, heavy lightning that was moving toward the festival, and it was also going to be a sustained event. And while this was a rain-or-shine event, it's not a rain-shine-or-lightning event, and lightning was absolutely the reason that this event was canceled. The site impact was predicted between 4:30 and 5:00 PM. At that time, there were 21,547 attendees who were scanned into the event. The evacuation order was given at 4:24, and the city staff was notified. And then pilgrimage immediately issued a code red and began making the announcements to evacuate the site. Several reasons that the, that the site was, evacuation was undertaken was because certainly people are not safe outdoors, and they're not safe in tents during lightning. It's at least a mile to a mile and a half, depending on where you have to go in order to reach a shelter. Several minutes are needed to stop traffic along Franklin Road and Liberty Pike in order to allow for this 15,000 people to walk the streets. While sheltering in on-site cars is the preferred method, and whether that be on-site or off-site, it was not expected that all attendees would go to their cars. We knew people would not want to sit in their cars and would venture to other places. Most people know that 15 minutes is a fast walk, one you normally do in exercise. You can't expect people to evacuate a site by gathering their belongings, gathering their children, and maneuvering out of the venue and into their cars in less than about 30 minutes. So that was the anticipation that I worked from. It was evident that the storm was approaching, though not everyone reacted to that, and took proactive steps to evacuate when they were told to, and that's another thing that we just know is going to happen. Rain, which was predicted to arrive prior to the full evacuation being accomplished, would also further slow down the process of evacuation. As part of our plan, vehicles were held in Harlinsdale Park until the attendees on foot were cleared from the streets. Again, 15,000 people are needing to quickly maneuver down the streets in order to reach some sort of shelter, and we take that into account by stopping all traffic on those roads, so that no accidents occur. Once those pedestrians clear those traffic lanes, then traffic is reopened, and in this case, the south lot was opened at approximately 6:00 PM. And then I'll tell you in a few minutes part of why that took so long. At 4:35 PM, radar indicating lightning was eight miles from the site, and at 4:50, rain began to occur on the site. As the storm continued in advancement, there was over 69 lightning strikes that happened within eight miles of the event, and one as close as .9 miles away. Once it was deemed safe, pilgrimage reassessed the site, and they met with the command post to consider their options for reopening the venue. However, we detailed a number of reasons that would make it impractical for them to open the venue, and some of those, some of those things included time needed to correct some site issues that happened, time needed for people to return to the venue, and to be scanned through the scanners, and to have bag checks, time needed for a show, especially a headliner to perform, and time needed for attendees to safely evacuate the site, should we have to do that again. So at 6:51, pilgrimage agreed, and they canceled the festival for the remainder of the night. Subsequently, at 7:23, there was a code yellow issued for approaching weather, and then at 9:02, a code yellow was terminated, once lightning was not detected within 20 miles of the site. Pilgrimage contracts with multiple security companies in order to have over 200 security personnel that work this event. And in this year's event, they also added 20 walkthrough metal detectors at all exits and entrances, which was a huge benefit. And during the evacuation phase, however, it was expected that these 200 security personnel would kind of sweep the site, giving directions to people to move off the site, that they needed to evacuate and they needed to report to the shelter. But this did not really happen. It was only minimally recognized on the video that we watched that any of the security people really engaged the people to leave the venue. In your, in your after-action report, you will see a number of pictures that illustrate kind of the evacuation process and the crowds at various areas through the event, but I'll recap just a few of those for you. The gold record evacuation, which had largest number of people in that area, within 12 minutes, about 90% of those attendees had left that particular area. Little Harpeth River, within eight minutes, 99% of the attendees had left the area. The VIP Village, after 12 minutes, this tent was 85% full, and three minutes later, a handful remained. And the main beer tent, after 23 minutes, this tent still remained full. Lot of people sought refuge in the beer tent, didn't want to leave the beer tent for a number of reasons.
There might be multiple explanations.
Yeah. All of the TVs were cut off in the beer tent, and they stopped selling beer in the beer tent, but yet people still refused to leave. And... Once, once law enforcement engaged and ordered the evacuation of the event, 99% of the venue, that part of the venue evacuated within five minutes. Did I hit that twice? Sorry.
Missing page 12.
Seems like I am. So... This year, pilgrimage was required to provide safety messages, and they worked the entire day putting together a four-and-a-half-minute videotape live on-site while everything was set up, so that it provided better information to the attendees. That's just a number of the certain things that I required them to, well, some of them that I required them to include, and other things they included on their own. And this was sent to each stage to be played during, between sets. Unfortunately, for a number of different reasons that have been identified, it was not played one single time during the entire day. So therefore, attendees never were given the opportunity to understand the benefits of what the safety message was provided. It is imperative that this be resolved in future years, and one of the things that we will require going forward is, the day before the event, pilgrimage will have to demonstrate their ability to show this video message before the gates will be opened.
Why was it not played?
There was a number of reasons. The first reason, on one stage, during setup, they decided to reorientate the screen from a horizontal to a vertical position. The formatting for the video had been done in the other method, and so when it got to it, it couldn't be played, because it wouldn't all show on the video screen. So they returned it back to their group, the media productions that do this, they reformatted it, and they got it back to the production people, but apparently there was miscommunications that happened between the media team and the people actually running the stages about when to play the video and how it was to be played. So that was the reasons that we were given that it was not played.
That's one stage.
Well, one stage had the formatting issue. The other issue was communications between how it was to be played and when it was to be played.
But it was never played?
That's correct. That's correct. And so again, it will be something that we require them to demonstrate their ability to do before the event, and also something that they have to maintain throughout the day's event, in between sets. At any time that they're not able to do that, we can close the event.
What was covered in it?
I'll go back to this slide here. Stage monitors for emergency messages, directing them to look at the stage monitors any time there were emergency messages. The location of all emergency gates were demonstrated on it. What the inclement weather plan was, was demonstrated, where emergency shelters were located.
So everything that would matter in another hour?
Absolutely.
Everything that ultimately mattered about evacuation was covered?
Was covered in the safety video, yes, sir.
Which was never shown?
Correct. So part of the site evacuation plan, the plan included shutting down, as I mentioned before, Franklin Road to allow the pedestrians to be able to use the full road with. Liberty Pike was also closed from Franklin Road to Eddie Lane, and only ride shares were allowed to go into the factory. Measures included, as I mentioned earlier, moving the law enforcement officers to strategic locations in downtown Franklin. For attendees who parked in proximity to the site, it was desired that they first seek shelter in their automobiles, but this wasn't always the case. Liberty Elementary, and the fact that are intended for sufficient, are attended for and sufficient for those who didn't park. If you parked in a vehicle, that's where you should seek shelter, and if we use our other shelters for everybody else who arrived by some other means, they're certainly more than sufficient to handle that load. than sufficient to handle that load. Should the event reopen, attendees could easily migrate back to the venue, and should the event cancel, and employee, or attendees who were in their vehicles could simply leave the venue. But what happened instead, most people either left the venue and left their belongings behind, or they left the venue and left their cars behind. So when the event was canceled, a number of people had to come back to the site, which again required us to keep traffic stopped on those roads. So that was the result of the prolonged traffic, and while cars were held in the site for so When we look at the factory of Franklin, we, Pilgrimage immediately notified the responsible for the factory, who was not on-site at the factory at the time, to let them know an evacuation was going to occur. They in turn notified the people working at the factory, but unfortunately, the factory didn't have any plan for how they were going to deal with the evacuation process, and Pilgrimage had no plan to provide anyone at the factory to be able to direct people in what to do. So thousands of people flooded into the factory, obviously it'd be in the closest place for an evacuation shelter, and also because there's food and drinks and other things that they can take part in there rather than sitting in their cars. And so this influx of people quickly overwhelmed the staff there, as well as, because no direction was provided, as soon as people got in out of the shelter, they kind of just stopped and hung around, and it didn't allow for a number of other people to get in. So future events will require Pilgrimage to place an individual in every shelter, at least one individual, really more than one individual, in every shelter to be able to provide information real-time to the attendees about what they should do and where they should go, as well as understanding the implications necessary in order to be able to communicate with those people, whether that be in-building PA systems, or whether that be their own PA systems that they have to provide. So we all understand that any evacuation, no matter how well thought out, requires execution by staff, and it also requires execution by the, or cooperation by the attendees. And you'll know from looking at some of the pictures there that the attendees didn't always respond the way that, that you wanted them to, and that's just part of the process that you have to go through. It's expected that some people will ignore and try to stay on-site, which was certainly the case in the beer tent. And, and it's also little evidence, as I mentioned, to suggest that security staff swept the site. So some of our after-action recommendations, perform a walkthrough of weather evacuation with all city staff to ensure that they know which shelter is there to go to and what their responsibility is once they get there. For all future events, no tents will be permitted in the flood plain around the flood area, around the pond there. All VIP tents will be located on the east side of the interurban due to the ingress and egress problems. The paddocks on the south side of the arena and west inside the paddock can still be used. The city should consider providing a law enforcement officer at each shelter location just to be able to maintain the peace. And also, an effective communications plan, as I mentioned, must be provided by Pilgrimage in each shelter to be able to make those notifications. Pilgrimage also recommends, recognizes the following. Message after the evacuation was practically non-existent on Pilgrimage's part. They've recognized the need to hire a communications director who is familiar with crisis communication, and they plan to do so before the next event. An effective communication system must be available at each shelter. They also must enter into formal agreements with every shelter that they use that also provides proof of insurance coverage. And it is recommended that the safety video message in shelter locations also be available prior to the attendees via their website, and also printed out on maps and handouts that the attendees will receive. Pilgrimage must provide sufficient representation at each shelter that is equipped with a sufficient communications to receive and provide continuing updates, and they must provide the signs and maps for the location of pickup and ride shares. While there are ample opportunities from sheltering from, from lightning and rain, there's not ample opportunities for sheltering of this many people from tornado events. So whenever the city, Williamson County is in a tornado watch, our recommendation is the event be canceled until that watch is over with. After the initial stage announcements were made, the stage technicians began to start unplugging their audio equipment to protect it from the lightning, which was understood that they might do that. But what Pilgrimage had not planned for is that was their means of communication to the attendees. So when they started unplugging all their soundboards and leaving, there was no way for them to communicate with the attendees from that point on. So Pilgrimage is going to be required to provide an alternative means to be able to communicate to attendees that doesn't involve Wi-Fi or sound stages. Wi-Fi, I won't cover that again, but basically Wi-Fi was inadequate for this purpose and has to be corrected moving forward. When we look at permitted attendance, again, it was 27/5 attended, permitted both days. Ticket sales were in the neighborhood of 25,000, the highest recorded attendance for Saturday was 22,103.
That's 22,000 paying people, or is that 22?
Paid people, not counting children under 10.
And what about staff?
Not counting staff.
How many staff?
About 1,500.
So you really did have about 25,000 on-site?
About, yeah, pretty close, probably to 25,000. Everything, again, was running smoothly until the evacuation occurred, and this was attributed to many of the things that we learned in our last year's after-action report and, and things that we put in place. Our planning efforts and our, and our execution by Pilgrimage and the city demonstrated that the site and the road network could accommodate, could accommodate this number of people from normal operations. Certainly, the evacuation posed a lot of challenges, and we, we firmly believe that those challenges resulted, resulted again in our inability to effectively plan and/or execute the plan in order to manage that number of people.
Well... I, I guess...
Do you want to go back to that? I'm sorry.
Yeah. That, so the, the big takeaway from that page is that the plan is fine, but the execution didn't work.
The plan on, for the normal operations was fine. It worked extremely well. When it got to the evacuation, there was a lack of planning on Pilgrimage's part.
But that, but that, but that the road and, the road, the site and road network could accommodate the size attendance, but could it accommodate an evacuation?
Yes, we believe that it could accommodate evacuation if the proper plans had been put in place.
Okay, what parameter? What parameter from the, from the word "get out," how fast is that evacuation? I mean, I assume that this evacuation, that the determination that, that an evacuation can be accommodated by the site and the road embedded in that was a time, a duration. What was the assumption?
The assumption on my part is 30 minutes.
So you...
30 minutes, someone should be able to reach shelter if they take deliberate action to leave the site.
Okay, so you believe that the road and the site network permits of a site evacuation accomplished within 30 minutes?
Yes, sir, I do.
With people in shelters, or with people at least off the grounds and on the, I mean, what does, what does that mean?
Yes, sir, with people reaching a shelter, whether that be a vehicle or whether that be a building that is established.
So how, how much, but the, so the plan, as I understand it, was hold the cars and get rid of the pedestrians, and then get rid of the cars?
It, well, if the event, if they wanted to leave, they could.
No.
Some people may choose to stay because an evacuation of, of the site is inside the fence perimeter, and it may be that the site reopens. Lightning that's happening eight, eight miles outside of the site may never make it to the site.
I get that. I'm talking about more like a tornado or a, it is, it is necessary to actually leave.
Yeah, absolutely not. It's not conducive for that, and that's why the recommendation is that when we're under a tornado watch, that the event be canceled.
Okay, so to be clear, it's, the road and site network does not accommodate a rather urgent "get everyone out of here as soon as possible" type evacuation?
That's a fair statement, yes, sir.
Okay. So if, if it were in fact a tornadic event with a late, with a late warning issued, we, we've got, even the most perfect plan executed perfectly exposes people for at least 30 minutes.
That's correct. And, and just to be clear, when we talk about tornadic activity, even though I'm saying that a tornado watch would be the, the, the method behind that, the last two tornadoes that hit the city of Franklin, we've not had a tornado watch or a tornado warning.
Okay.
They can develop in any thunderstorm, and even an F0 has turned over cars at Piggerton Park.
But if you knew, if you had a tornado tracking and you had 30 minutes to empty the site, it can't be done?
Uh, no. No, sir, it cannot.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so if you looked around the country, I mean, do, these events go on all over the United States. People have this same exact problem. So it's impossible to do what Dana just asked you about, getting everybody out of there in a reasonable amount of time if some catastrophic thing happens. I mean, isn't that true for any event, anywhere outside? I mean, I've been to things at DC and big amphitheaters and everything, and trying to get back to your car and everything. You know, I was in a stampede of people trying to get out of a place because of lightning and everything else, and trying to do that was no easy thing, but you know, they had, now today, they have it on an app. So probably communicate, I don't know if you all have the app yet, I think you did have an app, but, yeah, you have that app, but you know, communicating with the people through the app, who cares if you unplug your electricity and everything, it, it doesn't matter because you have that app and everybody will need to go to that to be communicated, especially when you see these things happening or coming. You could put that on there, I would think, so that people would say, "We may be evacuating. Just be alerted that if you would like to leave the park now, you may do so in a, in a timely manner, because maybe, you know, possibility, if this continues and it continues to head our way, we may be evacuating in the next 20 to 30 minutes or a half hour."
Right, and Pilgrimage, Pilgrimage does have it happen. The city also has an excellent account that they use, but the problem that we experienced was we didn't have the Wi-Fi coverage that was necessary in order to deliver that message.
Right, we mentioned that earlier, right.
And that's why we, we want to have multiple ways that we can alert the public and not just rely on one source.
The other thing, so I, I was just wondering, you know, if we've looked, or if you all looked around the country to pattern this after other people who have to evacuate in a very timely manner, I would, I would think that that would be something you would be researching.
Yeah, we have absolutely looked at a lot of different venues, and unfortunately, there's no apples-to-apples comparison.
Sure.
A single, a single two-lane road leading into this event and out of this event is problematic when it comes to a, a mass evacuation in a, in a quick amount of time, and the lack of shelters to be able to provide that coverage.
How many, how many feet from the entrance to the four-lane road do we have? Or how many, quarter of a mile?
When you say the four-lane road, which...
When you, when you actually get on the two-lane road to access a four-lane road, which is Mack Hatcher, a much larger area for people to, to disseminate into different directions. They can go east, they can go west, they can go different, you know, they could go north on Franklin, they could go on Mack Hatcher either way. So in order to get to that, how many, how many feet, how many tenths of a mile are we talking about?
If memory serves me correct, it's just under a mile to get from the south entrance of the park to Mack Hatcher.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
And, and they're, the south entrance, so that's where they're coming out of?
Well, they're coming out of multiple points throughout the venue, but that is the main promenade entrance.
Okay. Right.
You want to go ahead and finish your report?
So we believe that using, using the number of people that Pilgrimage has asked for for this particular permit, that if we make the, the necessary changes that are reflected in this after-action report, that we can accommodate the site. Certainly, we need to continue to participate in joint tabletop exercises, challenging ourselves about all the different possibilities that can happen, and, and to be able to manage this event. The last couple of sites, you've, you've all received, I think, the post-event grounds repair, but the, the Dog Park was reopened on October 11th, the Full Park was reopened on October the 26th, and in Appendix A of the report, you have a list of all of that, those charges and how that, that process entailed as far as the cost that was passed on to Pilgrimage. And that's, that's the report. That's a high-level overview as fast as I could go through it.
That's amazing.
You did great.
God, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Refresh my memory very quickly, what was the total time to evacuate the site with all the complications and problems we had?
Are you talking about people and vehicles?
Um, yes.
How about both?
Both.
I don't have an ending time on, on the vehicles. I can go back and look at the videos and ensure that the board gets that, but I know the south lot started emptying about 6:00 PM, the north lot emptied, started emptying before that. So my presumption is that it was probably close to 7:00 o'clock before the entire site was evacuated, but I would have to review the video to be sure.
And what about pedestrians?
Pedestrians, uh, the majority of pedestrians were off the site by that 6:00 time because that's when we opened up traffic, but it was...
And how long was it?
It was about 30 minutes.
No, it was 4:30 that you called the...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
An hour and a half.
I'm sorry. An hour and a half before we opened up the streets, yes. I'd have to go back to give you an idea about the time it took the majority of people to be off the site. Some of those people started coming back to the site to retrieve belongings and other things, so we'll have to, I'll have to watch the video very closely, disseminate kind of the two different categories of people.
So that transition from an evacuation mode to a, uh, empty-the-park mode from a traffic standpoint was problematic. Our shift from one mode to the other, we, we lost time in there, we couldn't fully see what was happening on the roadway, and, and I think that was one of the areas that was a challenge and why that time was longer than we would have expected or that we had, had planned for.
Other questions for Todd? Go ahead, Alderman, with Clinton.
What elements of last year's after-action report turned out to not have been implemented in this year's? In other words, what recommendations were made 14 months ago that turned out didn't get executed?
I'm, I'm not aware, right off the top of my head, of any that didn't get executed, with the exception of the video, the video that failed to play.
Well, somebody, okay. The safety video that told people what to do if we have to evacuate.
Yes, sir.
Other than that?
It was created. I witnessed it, I proved the message myself, but it was not played.
So you can't think of anything else that was recommended that wasn't done?
Not off the top of my head.
And is the, can you imagine any evacuation plan that doesn't involve pedestrians and only pedestrians first, and then vehicles?
If we elimi, uh, for instance, if we eliminated park, on-site parking on the south side. We could easily move certain traffic out and pedestrians out in certain, certain places at, at the same time, potentially.
But 20, so you'd have to move 2,500 cars, you'd have to cancel parking for 2,500 cars, which just means, as I understood what you said, then you're going to have a two-mile walk...
Potentially, yes, sir.
To a parking.
That's correct.
So, so you're either, you're either parking 2,500 people there, and they're going to have to shelter in place until the pedestrians are gone, or you get rid of the cars, but you force those people to be, that's, that's 6,000 pedestrians, or 5,500 additional pedestrians who have to walk an even further distance to a parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I think one of the things we talked about is increasing the north lot parking and maybe making that your, your, your patron parking. So put more parking to the north.
There was 1,500 parked in the north.
Right, but if you can put more parking there and maybe put your vendors and staff parking in the south, if you segregate those, you could park more in the north, and then that is dedicated, and they're only going one way out. And they're away from the bulk of the pedestrian traffic.
Well, but the north lot this year was closed.
So we would create some more segregation that way.
Okay, but the north lot was closed to vehicle exit until the pedestrians were cleared.
Yeah, and the reason that was, again, is because the Franklin First United Methodist Church decided to offer parking, which was not part of our original plan, and it, and we weren't able to overcome that, unfortunately. We obviously can't control if, if the church decides to open up their parking lot for parking.
But we have to accommodate the pedestrian, that's hundreds, that's potentially hundreds of pedestrians.
That's correct.
Hundreds? Okay.
Little over 1,000.
Yeah.
I think, I believe they have 400 parking spots available.
So the bottom line is, you have to get the pedestrians out before you can move the cars out. However you shuffle the deck with the cars, if the cars are there, they have to wait. And it's how many, it's, it's at least 30 minutes to get the pedestrians out?
Yes.
And even then, they're just walking somewhere, and only then can you get the cars out?
That's correct.
By which time, the cars might start getting stuck, because that is, that is, that did happen. By the time their cars were able to be permitted to leave, some of them could no longer leave.
That's correct. Certainly, in all of our planning efforts, we will continue to look at how we can move both pedestrians and vehicles off the site. If there's a possibility, certainly we want to...
But if, but if that's the plan next year, it'll be the first time anyone ever tried it.
That's correct.
Okay, well, because I've been there twice when it was time to leave. Once when it didn't matter how long it took, and once when it did, and in both cases, it was a disaster.
Yes, sir.
A complete disaster. A complete disaster.
And again, we have the construction of Franklin Road, which we won't, I believe, we won't know that until after April.
Yeah, we'll probably bid that springtime and probably it will start in the summer.
But we don't know how that's going to go.
Right.
That'll affect some of the parking plan as well. Won't be during this event.
Well, but...
That'll probably be, that would be more likely a 2020 issue.
Holden, Martin.
Has anybody considered busing?
Yes, ma'am.
Sco buses, whatever, to be available?
We have. Unfortunately, it takes longer to load and unload a bus than it does just for people to walk. It takes a long time for, especially when they're carrying strollers and children and other things, just the time it takes to load a bus and unload a bus.
Forget that then.
And then to go. It is extremely long process.
I was tracking you.
Other questions for Todd or Lisa or questions for pilgrimage folks?
I would just say that, first of all, I'm glad to hear that everything was going smoothly. I want to give one positive thing here, that I think things were going smoothly and everything was running smoothly before the evacuation. So that's a good thing. That's a good thing. How you communicate is going to be really key. It's going to be a real key and an important part for this next year, how to communicate with the attendees. And then the other thing is, oh, you know, I think just canceling petty cabs, to me, I think that's sort of rash. I would think that you'd want to correct the problem rather than just ban them. I think that could be corrected much better because I think they're needed. And I think it's a great way to get people in. But if you could work with the petty cab people and, you know, set the law down and say, this is what will happen, or we catch you weaving in and out, you're gone. You're just gone. You know, you stop the program right then. But I think trying to correct it rather than banning it might be something you might want to look into.
We've definitely looked at all of our options, what we believe to be all of our options for the petty cabs. And unfortunately, with the road network the way it is today, we find it extremely problematic. Once the project is redone, we believe there will be opportunities that open up for that.
Yeah, once we get...
Sidewalks on both sides and all that.
Yeah, that might be helpful. And then, do we have any issues with Uber and Lyft and drop-offs or people that...
Other than the Lyft driver that hit the police car?
No, not him. But families come up and they drop other family members off and then leave.
Pilgrimage does a really good job of messaging out to the Ubers and the Lyft drivers, where they are supposed to drop off and pick up. Unfortunately, once they arrive at the site, being directed by whoever's riding there, they're going to drop off wherever they want to. And unfortunately, there is no way for us to be able to stop that because they just pull off anywhere and start unloading people. What we did do this year is we required them to put geofences up. And a geofence means that you can't request a ride until you get to a certain boundary location. And so we were able to control the pickup. But there's no method that we're aware of that controls the drop-off, other than designating that location and messaging that.
That could be fixed as well. I think you can have a drop-off and pickup, one or two places.
We do have it. We do have it.
And that could be communicated, but there's some...
There's an enforcement issue on the drop-off. We have it designated, but...
It is designated. It is...
Is there any signage up for that?
Yes, ma'am.
There is? I didn't see that signage, so...
All right, I've got Alden Martin next, if you're through.
I just want to ask our pilgrimage gentlemen, are you sure you want to go on with this?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I do, too.
Okay. We're under some time crunches. I've got some changes I'm going to mention to you right now. We're going to delay talking about items five through, I'm sorry.
Four through nine.
Four through nine tonight. And I apologize to Mr. Holden, Holden and his staff, because this will be the third time we've delayed it. If we can squeeze those in at the end, we will. We're going to first go to the start items. We're going to go to item 13, which is professional services agreement with Revere Control Systems Incorporated for Telemetry System Maintenance Contract in the amount of $51,000.
So we won't see these items until January?
Right. Unless we, depends on what happens. If I can squeeze them in, I will.
It's fine.
Any questions about the telemetry? Okay, we'll move on to item number 15, which is something that, I'm sorry, 14, which is a bid award to Southland Constructors in the amount of $6,671,000 for the construction of the City of Franklin Fire Station Number Seven located in I-65 Patensville Corridor.
This is the fire station we've been operating, a temporary fire station on the southern portion of the Ag Center property. We've worked out a deal essentially with the county a couple of years ago where property would be provided, deeded to the city in that area to build a permanent fire station. And essentially, in exchange for that, we've provided extended sanitary sewer service to the Ag Center. So we were able to bid this project. It is essentially the Fire Station Eight design that you have in West Haven in this location with the addition of a bid alternate of emergency medical bay and living quarters for the ambulance service. So that is incorporated in this bid, along with a couple of other elements related to access to the site, roadway access to the site. So what we had, good participation from our bidders, strong participation and very close bids between our apparent low bidder and the next bidder within a percent, percent and a half of one another. Feel that this is a good representation of the cost to construct the facility. Williamson County counterparts have agreed to fund the full cost of the emergency medical component and half of the cost of the road access component. And so the balance of that will be funded by the city through our facility's tax dollars that we have accumulated. And there are sufficient dollars there, both budgeted in this year and anticipated to be budgeted in next year. But overall, within that fund, there are sufficient funds to construct this brand-new fire station. That gives you a good summary of it. Brad has led the charge on bidding this and the construction of previous, the previous station and others. This, we think, will be a great addition and help us continue to serve this area of the city very, very well.
Very good. You ready to move on?
Yep. You can move on, Mayor. Catch my breath and run it down.
Item 15 is Consideration Resolution 2018-0260, a resolution to approve issuance of the Health and Educational Facilities Board, the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County, Tennessee, of up to $14 million healthcare facilities revenue bonds, center stone of America, Inc. project.
So I'll just say a couple of things and let Christine take it from there. But this is essentially a non-obligation issue for us. It's issued through Health and Education Facilities Board in Nashville. But it, they are required to get a, do a public hearing and get a acknowledgement, at least, from a public body in communities that have their facilities located in them. So we have a facility on Duke Drive. It's actually a data center that will be upgraded through these, a portion of these proceeds. And so we're required to go through this process. We did this maybe two or three years ago with another issuance, I think, for Vanderbilt of a similar nature. No obligation to the city, but it is a sort of a notice, a public hearing and a acknowledgement by the board that we're aware of this investment going on in our community through this financing mechanism.
And there's a timeline to get it done this year.
Yes, they'd like to.
They've advised us that they need acknowledgements so they can close by the end of the year.
We're voting on this tonight.
It's on tonight. You'll hold a public hearing tonight. And they've given notice through the Tennessean of this public hearing.
Okay. Item 16 is a resolution to adopt budget goals for 2019-20.
These are the budget goals that we have adopted. There's financial, non-financial components that are fairly standard, that are kind of our key components in terms of your financial policies and guidelines that we see virtually every year when we do a budget. But then there's elements that relate more specifically to the fiscal year 2020 that we anticipate. So those are a little more tailored to what we expect in this annual budget. But these are the overall goals, the targets that we will strive to meet. And the budget will develop over the next four or five months for you.
Any questions, comments on that one? We'll go, we're going to defer item 18. Item 17, do we want to delay that one? Or do we want to see how much time?
I'd go ahead and go back to your item 10 and on and see if we...
Okay. Okay, we'll start with item 10, which is Consideration Resolution 2018-91, a resolution initiating the annexation process and draft plan of services for the Ingram property located at 499 and 4101 Clovercroft Road.
Good evening, everyone. We did get notification yesterday from the applicant from this project that they would like to defer the public hearing date to March 12th. But since this was already publicly noticed, we'd like to go ahead and run through some preliminary information. This is really just a stage to consider to annex, to start the annexation process. So it's, we're not really getting into major land uses or analysis of a development plan at this point. But just a discussion of whether you would be interested in considering the annexation at a future date. So I'd like to turn it over to Chris, just to run through a little bit about where the property is located and what is being proposed at this point.
Thank you, Director Hunter. The properties that are included are on the east side of Franklin. They're contiguous to the city limits, south of Clovercroft Road and adjacent to Amelia Park and Taproot Hills subdivisions. They are within the single-family residential design concept in Envision Franklin. And that applicant's proposed uses would be supported by the plan. A preliminary plan was presented before the board and the planning commission at the Joint Conceptual Workshop in September. And the plan proposed approximately 420 single-family residences with varying dwelling sizes and lot sizes. A big portion of the property are within, is within the hillside overlay and the hillside overlay buffer, which would result in a lot of the property being preserved as open space and used for community amenities. Again, with any sort of annexation, we'd have a development plan, a resoning request that would be submitted for formal, during the formal annexation process. And staff would recommend that we initiate that annexation process.
Questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move to two people who wanted to speak to this. I'll allow one minute each. Randy Foster, followed by Brian Gallagher. Please come on up.
Hi, Randy. My name is... Randy Foster. I live in the Watkins Creek subdivision at 3475 Stagecoach Drive. I sent everybody an email, "Sorry it was so long. I hope I didn't crash your servers with photos and things." But my only concern with this is that when you get to the next stage of this and start looking at proposals, you know, we did not like seeing the proposal that the developer had, which showed basically kind of mini West Haven-style houses. Over half the houses were alley-load, very small, from what I could tell, around 4,500 square-foot lots. And that backs up to on the bottom right down here in Watkins Creek. But we have 20,000 square-foot lots. I'd be looking right out my back door at the small, mini West Haven-style lots there. Those have a place in Franklin. West Haven's great. You know, it's great when you've got a large community of those. And it's supported by restaurants and retail you can walk to. This is out in the middle of a lot of county land. To be putting in such high density goes against exactly what the Maze Creek Basin study suggested. It goes against Envision Franklin even to have small lots like this backing up to our larger lots. You're supposed to have a transition in between those. So just, I would like you to keep all those things in mind. Other issues, eight seconds. Traffic flow, a lot of homes, 420 homes on a small amount of land. It's 95 acres of usable land. Way too much density for that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
We were just going to echo what Emily said as the applicant, so at this point, we don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Gord, got any questions?
I want to know what the, explain the little triangle in the middle of this.
It's just a separate part.
I do know that direction.
It's just a separate parcel that's owned by the family.
Why is it marked out like that?
It's just in GIS, the property line. So when we select them, it's part of the selection.
It's its own parcel.
Yeah, it's its own parcel.
But it's part of the overall request.
Go ahead, Alden, Burger.
Okay. Just to be clear on some of these things, where's Randy? Yeah, hey, Randy. Just to be clear, what you see before us is just a loose concept. Our planning department requires that the outside of that area that would be budding up against your property, that is not conducive to our plans, that we would require larger lots to be more in sync with what's there. So that's a real loose concept. So that design comes in when annexation occurs. The other thing is, this has been in the works for, how many years now? Four? Five?
Your guess is better than mine.
With Mr. Ingram. And then his wife has passed away and he wants to move on, trying to figure out what to do with this property. And I'm concerned with the transition, very concerned with the transition. There's so much of that property that's not developable because of gas lines, utility lines, floodplain, hilltop overlay, hillside overlay. What else am I leaving out? There's something else, a few other things, Chris. But...
That's three strikes.
Yeah, there's three strikes right there. But so the developable property there is in pockets. So the only two pockets you see there in that concept plan that you saw was really where they have to put the houses. This isn't our urban growth boundary. And in order to get sewer, which we would require, you can't do it on one house per acre, two houses per acre. They will need density because sewer is so expensive there. So that's one of the reasons why the density pockets happen in that area. But I want to be clear about something. The plan of services, whether we vote on going forward with the plan of services or not, it's a plan of services. And what it does is staff brings us the very needed information that we need, all the things that we need to make a decision that will come back to us. And then this board says, do we want to annex this urban growth boundary area into the city or not? So it's really important that the board have the information. So I think it comes down to the fact that if the board votes for the plan of services, does not necessarily mean we are in favor of the annexation, but we are interested in it. And if, at least for me, I know that I need the information in order to make a decision. So I'm not totally against the plan of services. I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of issues with this property because it has its own issues. But I think that we do need, we need the information. And the other thing is that I'm asking for us to do, and we've talked about this, is that we work with our county commissioner, I think County Commissioner Greg Lawrence and County Commissioner Chad Story are both here tonight. And that we would work with them, this is fourth district, and work with Brad, is Brad here? Brad Fiskus? He called me this evening. He's the school board representative for Williamson High Schools. He called me on my way over tonight when we had a discussion about this property. So I would see that all of us would work together with the school administration for capacity. Because capacity, we've got to start looking at capacity issues for our schools before we approve any development. We've got to make sure that that is a given for any new development. So I just wanted to say that upfront because I don't want people to think that, you know, if myself or anybody in this board votes for a plan of services, we're not saying we vote for that plan or we vote for the annexation itself.
And the plan of service you're seeing at this point is an initial draft. You're directing us to go do that work and more fully develop what it would take to serve this piece of land at a Franklin level of service and what's involved to get there. So, yeah, what you've got right now is really just sort of our initial first blush. You direct us to do this. We'll do much more detailed work. The issues around density will certainly be a major element that will be looked at and addressed, that Mr. Foster brought up. That's all part of what happens in this next stage. We just want to see, is there enough interest to have us go do that more detailed work? We just wanna see, is there enough interest to have us go do that more detailed work? No one's committing to anything at this stage in the process, it's just, and, and interest enough to go do additional homework related to this possible annexation.
And, and Mr. Ingram has asked for the property to be developed at some point, and because of all the challenges on that property, we're gonna have a great deal of open space there, we're still gonna drive down and probably, hopefully see cows still on some of the property. But I, I think that the due diligence, because this is our urban growth boundary, I do think that is an obligation for us to at least do the research.
Right.
Where is the closest sewer?
The closest what?
Where is the closest sewer?
It's in the draft here. The closest sanitary sewer is two-hundred-and-forty linear feet.
So there's.
I'm sorry, two-thousand-four hundred linear feet.
The, the adjacent city neighborhoods are all on our sewer system.
So, so, hey, so they've got, okay.
Surrounding, basically. And, and I might add too, since Clyde, you brought that up, that, that, that property drains in two different directions. One, that part drains to the south, the other part drains to the north, correct?
I believe that's right, and there are some additional sewer requirements, I believe, that have been discussed preliminary level at this stage regarding where capacity lies and with which basin, because it does drain in two different directions.
Alderman, Mark.
I just wanna say that the only way I'm going to support this development is if it is not dense like we hear it's going to be. If it has to be dense in order to get the sewer, then we need to do something else. The property owner needs to do something else. We're not in the business of trying to do for the property owner what is not best for the city, and, and the neighbors, and, you know, this is a, a really fragile piece of property right here. And, and I am not for densing it up, just so we can have the sewer and it can be developed.
And I think that feedback is helpful for the applicant at this stage, for them to know, because as well as while we're asking you to see if you're interested in considering to annex the property and move forward in the process, they would, the applicant would also be investing a lot of money to develop plans.
That's right.
So that feedback is very helpful for them at this stage.
They need to know that on the front end.
Yes.
So that would be good to talk about.
One more question, Alderman, Brian here.
I would like to see the plan of services, so that's going forward.
Yeah, you've got a draft version here that's very high level, and that will be, whatever comes back, should you direct this to go into the process, you'll get a detailed plan of services along with the, the development plan and the proposed zoning.
And the zoning.
So, Mr. Mayor, at the public hearing in March, what would we have? What would be there? Everything would be ready?
You will still have a draft plan of service at that point.
Just only, only what we have today, okay.
Yes.
It's all, it's preliminary, it's, it's an initial look at it, so that you can direct us whether to continue the process.
Question?
Go ahead.
If, um, so when that comes back, then we could make a decision, we're, we're not going to allow septic in the city if we annex it, correct?
We don't typically do that with any new development, no, that is.
But we could allow alternative systems, or a pump station, or something of that nature.
I would not expect that's something we would recommend.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna ask that you tie into the central system.
Okay.
No grinder system. Pump station is not gonna work.
Right. Well, we have them out there now.
There, there are pump stations that sometimes work with our central system, but a decentralized alternative system is not something I would expect us to be considering at this site.
So, went back to Margaret's question, just to be clear, to talk about this one more time, that if, if we don't allow, then if the plan of services come back, and then this board says, what Margaret has said, that I don't want to see the density there, and we agree with that, then in order not to put the density, they could develop it either in the county, and we do not annex in our urban growth boundary, or they do something else that.
They could propose a plan that does have larger lots, or a lower overall density. Envision Franklin does call for transition between county subdivisions and larger lots and new developed area, but that is not necessarily throughout the entire subdivision, it would be on the periphery of the development. And so Envision Franklin would support some smaller lots in the, in the center of the property, not immediately on the periphery. But as the applicant did present at a joint workshop, they are proposing some lots that may be, or, at that stage, were proposing some lots that may be narrower than what's promoted by Envision Franklin, in which staff would have to recommend disapproval because it doesn't align with Envision Franklin.
Okay, we'll move on to item eleven. Consideration initiated.
How, how would the, how would the applicant know what density is acceptable? I mean, we want to, we, we don't, we want less density.
They don't.
Envision Franklin?
Well, Envision Franklin doesn't get into a specific density.
Mm-hmm.
Really, I, I would say based on the guidance we've received, that, uh, staff would direct them to design a site that is in compliance with Envision Franklin, but if that is still not supported by the board, we would need a little more feedback and direction, I would say.
And then we need to do that before March?
Yeah, like, well, that's why I think the session.
That's deeper into the process, folks, I don't think you wanna. I, I think it's difficult for you or them to make that calculation until we look at what it takes to serve it.
That's right.
In terms of the investment that's necessary to tie into the central system.
And this development plan would be required to go to a joint conceptual workshop.
Yes, you're gonna get to see it again in that setting.
Before it even moves forward to Planning Commission for a recommendation to the board. So this will not be the only time it will be discussed. This is really more about whether you're interested in moving forward with a potential annexation. The property is contiguous to our city limits, given annexation law the way it is, the property owner has requested to come into, into the city, so those are really the factors that are being considered.
All those criteria has been met.
Yes.
Okay, item eleven, consideration initiating annexation process, draft plan of services, resolution twenty eighteen dash one oh-one for the annexation of the Bennett property at forty-three twenty-one Long Lane. Let me clarify and ask some questions. I'm not asking people to come up and speak yet, I'm gonna clarify that right now. And, uh, this annoys me when you bring up notes to speak at the last minute, so, but I'll take it. If there's spokesman for the, Amy Alexander's the spokesman for the Refuge Center, and I will allow her an extra few minutes to speak. I know there are probably several other groups here. I know there's people that represent maybe the HOA board from Lad Park, there may be people that are in opposition. If you have a spokesman, I'm glad to welcome a spokesman and give you an extra minute. If not, we'll give everybody one minute, other than Amy Alexander. So, uh, I mentioned that the other night whenever I met with some of the residents, so do you have a spokesman?
I'm glad to be the spokesman, I have a couple extra minutes, I could, you know.
So who, we'll decide. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and let staff, go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate, just like the last item, this is really more about the annexation of the property and whether you're interested in moving forward. We, Josh will run through what Envision Franklin does state for the property, but at this point, we do not have a plan for the property moving forward. The applicant may be able to speak to that a little bit, but this is really more about the overall growth of the city, and whether it's a, something that the board would like to see moving forward into their urban growth boundary. So I'll turn it over to Josh at this point.
Thank you. This property is contiguous to the city limits on the eastern edge of the Williamson County Agricultural Center and south of the Lad Park neighborhood. Envision Franklin recommends a regional commerce design concept on all properties south of Long Lane in anticipation of the extension of Caruthers Parkway and realignment of Patensville Road. The proposed use, as discussed thus far with staff, would be supported by Envision Franklin. After this consideration to annex this property, the next steps would be to process the annexation request, formalize the plan of service, and zone the property. So long as there are no changes to the nature of the proposed use, staff would recommend a general office zoning district. A general office zoning district would not require a PUD, but would require a site plan. Staff recommends initiating the annexation process.
Wanna hear from some residents?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Amy Alexander to come up, and I'll give you just a couple of extra minutes.
How long do I have?
How long do you need?
I can talk fast, yes. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to share about our project. The Refuge Center for Counseling is a Christ-centered, nonprofit group of professional counselors.
Please speak up.
Oh. Okay, is this better?
Better.
Okay. The Refuge Center is a Christ-centered, nonprofit group of professional counselors. We are not a mental health facility. We have fifty-four counselors on staff, the majority of which are part-time. In two thousand and eighteen, we will provide twenty-two thousand clinical contact hours for three thousand individuals between our main office and our other eight ministry partners. The Refuge Center is not, and never will be, an overnight facility or a drug rehab facility. The city of Franklin has stated that mental health is a key issue for the city in coming years, and a comprehensive study done by the United Way of Williamson County shows that mental health is the third greatest need behind transportation and affordable housing for our community. In the past five years, the Refuge Center has reviewed over forty properties in Williamson County, formally vetting twelve of those. Given our aesthetic, location, topography, and financial needs, this property accomplishes all of our original vision, it could be within the city of Franklin, and the seller believes in our mission values and vision. The seller has given approval to file annexation prior to the property's closing. The seller has worked with the Refuge Center to delay closing in order to work through the annexation process, and the seller has rejected other higher-priced offers from developers because of their belief that this intended vision belongs on their property. Mr. Bennett says he views the Refuge Center as a place that redirects children to meaningful life purpose. We reduce domestic violence, family separation, and heal trauma. The Refuge Center prevents suicide and bullying, and builds self-esteem. Refuge heals and comforts, it brings people together, it does not divide. The design will be park-like, and it will fit within the values of the Lad Park community. That's a quote by Mr. Bennett. In closing, the Refuge Center helps individuals become healthier, it makes the family stronger, and in turn, that makes for a more resilient and loving community. This truly creates a kindler, kinder, and gentler community, as President Bush would say. Thank you for your time.
And if you'd state who you're speaking for, and clarify that if you would.
I'm speaking on behalf of the residents that will be directly impacted on Long Lane. Yes, ma'am. I'll look it up, there you go. So I'm speaking on behalf of the residents who will be directly impacted by this annexation and rezoning on Long Lane. First and foremost, we appreciate the message that Amy conveyed, we are in agreement that that is a need within all of our communities. But what we wanna state is that, wholeheartedly, that we all buy into a community and a subdivision when we buy our homes, for the most part. The Blanch Moss subdivision is located across the street from my property. It is a property that has five different plots that are currently residential. Yes, they're in the urban growth boundary, but the covenants of this property were established before the urban growth boundary was enacted in Franklin. They were also established before Envision Franklin, and we know that within Envision Franklin, there's some pretty serious verbiage about not encroaching on residential lots, and impeding the investment, and obviously taking away from the investment that folks worked their entire life to be able to afford and be able to have a residence within. That all being said, you know, the folks across the street from me matter a lot to me, they're my neighbors. And I understand how much trauma and issue that this is inflicting on their property and their home, and the inherent value of their property down the road for resale or whatever the, the opposition might incur. With that being said, I just wanna say that we know there's gonna be a loss of value in property value for these folks. We know it's gonna be a big impact. Some of those will be adverse and long-lasting. I had the opportunity to live right in front of Lad Park as it was developed, and we were promised by the developers that we'd have a nice farm fence behind our house, and there would be one-acre size lots. And right now, there's point-two acre size lots, there's no farm fence. Six months after construction began, my house was broken into. Six months after that, my yard was flooded, two times. And even though that occurred, the city of Franklin and the electric company came to me and asked me if I would allow for a telephone pole to be placed on my property, and I did so. I did it for my community, for the city of Franklin, and helped my neighbors out, neighbors within Long Lane. I did it at my expense, because we sacrificed our property. And I'm asking this board and the mayor to vote against this annexation and rezoning because it is a residential area, and I feel like I've done my part for the city of Franklin, had to install a twenty thousand dollar security system to make my wife feel comfortable in our house again. And that being said, we know that there're gonna be issues, we know there're gonna be damages to this property adjacent for the homeowners, and we just want to convey our concerns and ask that the city of Franklin look at this in a perspective of, if this was your home, and it was happening next to you, how would you really perform on this vote? Thank you.
Okay, I don't think anybody else has identified themselves as speakers for the neighborhood or anything, so we'll start with Carissa West. You have one minute, followed by Kathy Brooks. So he's gonna rep, Canoe, Canoe, you're gonna represent who?
The Lad Park Homeowners Association. My name's Canoe Cauchell, and I've been volunteered by the association to come, uh, share some thoughts. Did wanna provide some clarity, as an association, we are kinda late to the information game as far as the property's concerned. There is, certainly, the issue is, been discussed multiple times in a short order. Information is what's been lacking up to this point, as far as the use of the land we've had the opportunity to meet recently, and Amy and her team have, have been very forthcoming and with information at this stage. The concerns of the neighborhood, or at least some of the people in the neighborhood, are not necessarily about the use of the, the property, what the intended use of, by the group is. In fact, there's a lot of support for the mission of the Refuge Center. The bigger concern is really about annexation of a residential property that is so close to our, our community itself. We are not new to the idea of growth and the fact that development is happening all around us. In the event that the annexation were to happen, you know, the bigger concern really comes down to infrastructure at this point. The bigger concerns are about Long Lane, there is a very dangerous curve on Long Lane that exists today. I know there's a plan for the Long Lane overpass to be done. We would hope that any movement, as continued growth happens, that, that overpass be moved up faster, especially if the board is gonna consider annexation, adding traffic even by one car, we're already seeing the effects of that. There has been a fatality already in front of the TA, you know, blending traffic there has been a difficult situation, it was a resident of the Lad Park community. We also want for Caruthers to be considered for having it brought to completion. That's another concern. So there are many projects, we feel, that as the board is considering all options for changes in the area, to first start with completing certain projects that are already in the works, or moving them up in the timeline. The other concern that I would say is, you know, thinking of development in the area, Envision Franklin, and some of the other things that are already in place, would deeply like to consider the thoughts of what the area's looking like. The fact that we have the Goose Creek Inn in the area is a major concern, it's a blight on the area, and it's very close to some of the proposed changes that we're talking about. So, you know, I, I think in, in totality, from the HOA's perspective, we represent all of our neighbors within the community, they're all dues-paying individuals, they're very interested in property value, they're very interested in our community. There is obviously, it was great to hear about the fire station tonight, but, you know, we are working off of a temporary fire station in the area, that's yet another project that is well underway. I think from the association's standpoint, do wanna make it as a point of record, there's no one against the Refuge Center. We are more interested in smart growth and smart development, and we are speaking on behalf of both sides, if there are any sides, of making sure that the property is being con- of making sure that the property is being considered fully, that there is, it is residential currently. It is gonna be hurting some of our neighbors, but you know, that happens in growth as well. But other projects should be considered as well. Thank you.
Okay, Carissa, you relinquished your time. And what about Kathy Brooks?
Steve wanted to speak, I believe, maybe in opposition, opposing opinion to that. I wanted to speak if I'm able to.
Will everybody get a chance if they want to? I'm just trying to consolidate and give more time to people. Go ahead, Steve.
I was gonna be asked to speak in favor of the annexation.
Please come forward. Mr. Abernathy, Steve Abernathy. Since, I'm gonna give him a couple of minutes.
Thank you. I live at one fifty-two Clyde Circle in Lad Park. I've been there since February of two thousand and fifteen. I am asking you to proceed with the annexation process for this property. I became aware of this on November twenty-first. I was told that this property was gonna have like a halfway house, was gonna house people overnight, was gonna have people that maybe had records that the, that the proposal was trying to be snuck in before anybody knew about it. I contacted Alderman Speedy and said, please help me out a little bit to get more information so I can get it to my neighbors as quickly as possible because this is what we're being told, and I obviously, with those conditions, would not have been for it. Alderman Speedy helped me out. I got the response from Amy Alexander. The, it was right after, before the Thanksgiving holiday, so I got it right on a Monday, right after. And I read through the material about the Refuge, and none of the information I'd been shared on the twenty-first was true. None, other than the fact it was across the street, but it wasn't directly across the street from the entrance. That was, to me, a concern. So the next thing I did was take that information forward to the people that were working on what to do. There was supposed to be a planning meeting on the twenty-seventh. I found out more information after that, particularly as I read through the material. I found out from my wife that one of my granddaughters actually had been to the Refuge, and it was a very calming place. It was well-run. And in fact, I talked to Alderman Speedy, and he said, I think it's down the road from where his house is, and it's very unobtrusive. He didn't know it was there. So that was all information that was so counter to what I'd been given. First time, I thought, you know, I wanna know more information about this. They were having a meeting on the twenty-seventh, and I invited Amy Alexander to attend because I thought that was important to get more information about it, especially since the first information was an error. And I did invite her, and then I shared that with the team that was working on it in Lad Park. And unfortunately, I got a call that morning on the twenty-seventh telling me not to invite her, that it wasn't my place, that since I didn't call the meeting, I didn't have the authority to invite anybody, and I was asked to uninvite her, which I did. I didn't, I was embarrassed by doing it, but I did it. And it was the first red flag to me. There was a problem with this process. The petition that was done was rushed. It unfortunately was put out without a lot of fact-checking. You have a copy in the package I sent you. In fact, all of you got a package from me on the ninth. I hope that you've had a chance to read it. It was hastily prepared, and I have a little experience on that. I was on the Davidson County Election Commission for four years. And during that time, I refused my share of pension petitions. In my opinion, the petition, which is shared by others, was biased and was designed to get a no vote. There's various fact-checking errors that I identified, and I tried to share on the Facebook page, Facebook page after the petition started. Unfortunately, by the time I got some information about the number of visits there, there'd already been processed, a hundred and eighty-six votes with the information that was in fact not correct.
You'll go ahead and finish up.
Okay. The last thing I'll share with you, I talked to the administrative election in Davidson County that I know, and I asked him to look at the petition. And I said, give me your opinion, up or down. Is this a fair-worded petition? Because I know I got a bias on it, okay? I do, and I'll tell you what that is in a second. He looked at it, and he said, well, they're definitely against it. He told me to write a letter, and I wrote that letter, said, "I wasn't able to attend the meeting on November twenty-seventh when the petition was discussed and developed. Was there anyone present at the meeting that was in support of the refuge and annexation proposal that gave input on how the petition should be worded?" The response I got from the people that were working on it is, there was no one there in support. There was one person in there who was neutral. You can't have a fair petition if you don't have participation from both sides. In conclusion, the refuge, I think, will add value to our community. The mental health illness problem is real to me. We've had a family that had their son commit suicide recently. I sent that information to you. I'm speaking for myself here. I have fourteen grandchildren.
Yes, sir. If you go ahead and close down. I want to be in sense of fairness. You're speaking for a group, and I've...
I have fourteen, I have fourteen grandchildren. I'm fixing to wrap it up. Fourteen grandchildren. Of that fourteen, four of them range as age nine to thirteen, or nine to sixteen, have gone to counseling centers like the Refuge, and if it hadn't been for that, I think two of them who threatened suicide. So it's a very important part here, and I hope you guys will support this because the refuge is a very valuable part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers. One minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, I'm Scott Myers. I live at forty-three twenty-two Long Lane. I've been a fortunate resident for almost thirty years in Franklin. Love the community, really appreciate the city and what they stand for and how they watch out for the interests of the residents. I am not a resident. I'm a county resident. Live across, directly across the street from the proposed business. Unfortunately, the area that they're considering right now is all residential. All the surrounding properties are residential. There are questions about whether or not they can legally have their property there. And the reason I say that is because there's existing covenants. They have to be explored. And the residents that surround the property are united and not allowing any utilities to trespass on our properties. I believe in the refuge. I think it's a wonderful organization. Just opposed to having a business directly across my street, having headlights in our house all the time with people coming and leaving. I have a hard time currently going across the street to get my mail. They're gonna have to relocate my mailbox down the road, and I'll be exposed to additional traffic and danger that goes along with it. So I'd kindly request the board and Alderman to not consider this for annexation. Thank you.
Mr. Ross. Mr. Oglesby will be next. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Hello, my name is Greg Ross. I live at forty-three twenty-one Long Lane. It is part of the same property that was, that, it's been split some thirteen years ago, and it does have the same covenants on it that I have. I live right here. This is my house right here. So I have a great concern. Now, I have, I do understand that when a owner of a piece of property wants to have it annexed into the city, they have every right to do so. This Bennett property is, has a contingent buyer, the Refuge Center, which is a nonprofit facility. And as I understand, they will not be paying real estate taxes. And I believe that if a property is rezoned from residential to, is rezoned from residential to commercial, it should benefit the city, the county, and the surrounding community. If it is rezoned, it would, it would, okay, I'm almost done, right? All right, well. Well, my biggest concern is a commercial building going in the middle of a residential community. We've all moved out to a residential community. Lad Park doesn't, is not a mixed-use community. We moved there because it was private. It was not, the crime rate would be lower. We have privacy, and we are concerned about the traffic on Long Lane. We are concerned about the safety of our children and, and our motorists. So please consider what you would think if this was happening next door to your places. And thank you so much, Mayor and Alderman. I do appreciate the time.
Dan Oswald, followed by Sarah Oglesby. Followed by Kathy Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Alderman, I, my house is this one, two lots down from Mr. Ross. I just would, I'm not against the annexation of this property. If somebody wants to be in the city of Franklin, I think that's a great thing. I am concerned about the rezoning from residential to commercial uses for this property. My house sits at the end of the driveway, directly behind this. And so with that kind of traffic coming in and then out, I'd think about you guys and consider if your neighbor sold their house to an organization who wanted to turn it into a free clinic. And they were gonna offer services in the county that were admirable, just like the Refuge Center. But in, in order to do so, they were gonna pave over the backyard of that house, so your neighbor's house has a paved backyard. They're gonna add parking lights. They're gonna have traffic coming in from seven AM till eight PM at night, six days a week. And that's gonna happen next door to you, where you live every day. What does that do to, to the quality of life for you and your family, sitting in what clearly is a residential area today? So I'd ask for you to vote against the annexation.
Hello, Sarah Oglesby, Lad Park resident. Just would like to echo the statement from Canoe as far as we would like to see this property remain residential and would ask that you take that in strong consideration. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Brooks, and I live at eight fifty-five Fontwell Lane in Cruthers Cove in Lad Park. And I understand the concerns that the residents that are buddying up to this property have regarding it becoming a commercial property. I guess I don't particularly see it as completely commercial. I've seen the plans and the lodge-like building, and I think will be much more aesthetically pleasing than a big neighborhood that could possibly go in there. My first choice would be that there'd be no building there at all, but I think with the growth of the county, that's not very realistic. And so I do like the aesthetic look of this, and I think it's gonna preserve more of the natural landscape. Professionally, the bulk of my career has been working with people with disabilities, especially students with disabilities. Most recently, I was an advocate with Disability Rights Tennessee, the state's protection and advocacy agency for people with disabilities, and I traveled middle Tennessee doing that advocacy work. One of my biggest frustrations was that my clients could often not find counseling services. So we're lucky to be in a community where that's available. It's very important to adolescents, which will contribute to the safety of our overall community. Thank you.
Board, you got questions or comments?
I have a question. You're recommending general office. Is that right?
From what we know of the use at this stage, yes, that seems the most appropriate zoning district due to the clinic use as well as what we would consider for counseling being an office use. That zoning district allows for both of those.
But it also allows for many, many other uses, correct?
For several other office-related uses, definitely.
Again, that's something that gets more fully vetted in this process in terms of what zoning is requested. We're giving our, our opinion based on what we know at this stage.
Well, just thinking in the planning part, it also said, though, that that would be required to be a site plan if it's rezoned.
It would be a site plan to the planning commission.
Not the staff?
No, not in this case because...
Not in this case, but, but very often...
Because it would be surrounded at least one or two sides by residential, so it would have to go to planning.
But sometimes staff does, does that. Thank you.
Alderman Speedy.
So my question for staff is, it's come up multiple times about covenants on the property. Does that apply? Is this regional commerce under Envision Franklin and get annexed into the city? Are then we able to zone it? Does that, does the covenants issue have anything? Is that a Shawna question?
Yeah, at this point, planning staff has not looked into that issue. I can't provide an answer in terms of the covenants. I don't know.
And I do want to speak to the Lad Park people. I mean, they're obviously concerned about infrastructure. If you look at the ten-year plan out there, I think the board has realized the importance of the Long Lane connector. Carruthers Parkway is slated to be four lanes somewhere in our ten-year plan. Goose Creek will be four lanes all the way across, and Carruthers will be completely extended south. So it is in the urban growth boundary, and we know the growth is happening out there.
Alderman Burgers asked whether Mr. Gamble wanted to speak, and I didn't have any information he wanted to speak.
I thought he was representing the applicant or not. So that, I was curious, because I see these things here. Are these yours, Greg?
Yes, this is a part of our team's site plan proposal.
So I thought you were speaking with...
You have one minute.
I'm just available to answer questions.
Okay.
I'd like for you to pick that up so that we can view it, please.
Yeah, I'm curious what these are, so.
Okay, this, this is the site plan that we've been working towards showing the residents as we have our neighborhood meetings. This is J.C. Alder, the architect. And you can see on the backside of the property, this is the hilltop, hillside, overlying area that will be in protection. The Refuge Center is looking for a property that truly is a refuge, that has outdoor space, that they can have memorial gardens, that they can have outdoor experiences in, that are a part of that counseling. You can see that we do have parking that's located in the front, the building toward the middle of the side. The side of the building is designed as a residential form so that it complements what's long, Long Lane.
Where is Long Lane on that?
North.
Oh, I can't, oh, now I see it, sorry.
We'll have significant landscape buffers on both the north and the south of the property, again, to create more of a sense of seclusion for the campus and what's going to occur here. That's a big part of the refuge and its concept. So we're, we're not at that point where this site plan is fully developed. We've had a lot of questions about traffic input and access. We still need answers.
And where is the shared driveway? Is that the very, right there?
So when you're driving down Long Lane, then will you see this? If you're gonna buffer it?
The intent is that there will be, the elevation will be screened from this part of the landscape.
You'll see it, but what you're seeing is the elevation of a single-family residential house. It was complementary to a residential building. What's behind it is more of the mass of the building itself. And that's very, very intentional. You'll see on the backside here, it's only one-story structure.
That works with the topography.
So if I'm driving down the road, then I would see the rooftop, and you have trees and everything, so I'm not seeing like, oh.
You would see this, you would see this edge right here.
And this is not, everybody keeps talking commercial. This is general office, correct?
Staff is currently recommending general office. Of course, as we get further into the review process, we can look more into other options at that point, but this is the recommended zoning from staff at this time.
And that recommendation, I believe, is based on the fact that these are, these are counseling offices. This is not a medical plan.
Right.
It's not a mental health disease.
So general office would fit. You wouldn't need, and commercial wouldn't fit. Commercial wouldn't be...
The word "commercial" has never entered into this.
No, but everybody's been using that as they spoke tonight, and I'm thinking, this is not commercial.
It's non-residential.
It's non-residential, but it's general office is what you're looking at.
One of the aspects of this where some of the, it's kind of a little bit lost in translation is that Envision Franklin identifies this area as regional commerce, which does allow for commercial, right? But, but, and it also, it also calls for these kind of transitions. Uses in this location, but not just uses, but form and transitional architecture. And so what we're looking to do here is, it's not a residential house, so it's not a residential use, but it is, it does have that residential form.
I'm gonna go to Alderman. Transfer. Is there a question about annexation?
Yes.
I mean, plant service.
Annexation, if we do not annex that, can you do this same project in the county?
It's a single-family residential within the county.
Okay. So if this was a physician's...
But you could rezon in the county.
It's our understanding from the county, we cannot zone up to a higher, a higher intensity of use.
It would be very, very unlikely, and this use needs to have city steward.
If, so Greg, could you put a, let's say, a physician office, which would be similar to this healthcare center, just what I see it as? This could be a physician office, and would that be something that would be more acceptance to the community if it was a physician's office?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
Yeah, okay.
Could it be civic?
Could it be civic institutional?
We'd have to explore that more. We have had some discussions with some folks over in Building and Neighborhood Services about the use, but without really speaking to the Refuge Center more and getting into the details of exactly what they do, it's our understanding that this would be classified more as an office use because it's counseling and not truly, you know, a civic institutional medical use.
People don't steer with that either.
Yeah, I'll-
Well, the zoning needs to be as restrictive as possible to get to this particular, if that's what we're looking for.
So general office again is our recommendation at this stage. The other option would be an SDR, or an SDX zoning, sorry, which would be a PUD development plan that comes before you with the uses listed that they would be proposing. That would be a development plan that requires approval by the board, but when general office zoning allows for the uses that they are proposing at this point, staff would recommend going that process. But there is an alternative if the board wanted to rezone it, SDX.
Alderman Bransford.
I've just heard several people say this is a residential area, which I would agree to some extent, but when you look at the aerial map, it's very obvious that the Ag Center is to the left of this. So, I mean, that, that's a really big use and it's a very vibrant use at lots of different times of the year. So I think that's a little bit misleading that it's a, it's a, it's a traditional residential area. Just a statement.
Any other comments? So let me do a little housekeeping here. Item number 12, we're going to put off till next year. Item number 17, I've already said we were going to put off till next year. Item-
Can I, can I ask on item 11, first of all?
Let me finish here and I'll let you go. Item 17, we're going to defer. Item 18 is going to be deferred to another meeting. Item 19 is for your information as far as the calendar for next year. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms.-
I just want to clear, be clear, on item 11, our, our typical process would be to go ahead and have a public hearing and a vote about whether to move it into the formal annexation process. We would do that on January 8th if we're following our normal process. Are you all comfortable with following that schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We had had some meetings with staff, with different parties. One of the things we've, came out of our most recent meeting this week was to try to convene a part, a meeting amongst both neighbors and the Refuge Center. We'll work to do that between now and, and that, that meeting if at all possible. But just wanted to check that we're okay with that schedule, that timing.
Alderman Bransford had asked, said that there were some residents here on Cummings Street, some of the pavement markings and signage.
Did someone talk to you about that?
Mr. Blair was under the assumption that that went all the way to Cummings as it hit Falk Street.
Clarification.
So knowing that it was just that strip from the podiatrist to Fifth Avenue in loose terms, he was like, oh, all right.
Okay, is there anything that I've overlooked as far as items on the agenda? Are there any other comments? We'll adjourn till about 10 after 7:00.